Good evening, good evening. Welcome to our special meeting for July 25, 2022. If I have everyone to please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Trustee Mitchell? Trustee Middleton?
President.
Trustee Enginga?
Here.
Trustee Gale?
Here.
Trustee Lancy?
Here.
Trustee White? Trustee Saunders?
Here.
VP Kelly?
Here.
President Kerwin?
Here.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I want to start by mentioning that we are hiring. So please join us for our job fair, which will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, July 26, 2023, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at Mount Vernon High School. This evening, I have one superintendent report. There will be a presentation by the Westchester County Department of Social Services, and I will ask Ms. Lehman to introduce her colleagues. Thank you.
Can you speak up a little bit? I think your mic on? Testing, is that better? Okay, great, thank you, sir. Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Smith, it's really good to see you. Thank you so much for this invitation to come and present before you and your colleagues at the school board and also for the constituents who we love to support at the Westchester County Department of Social Services. My name is Tara Lynn Lehman, and I work at Westchester County DSS. And I am here along with my director, Glenda Bryan, who I will introduce very shortly. She is our leader in the Office of Policy Planning and Program Development at Westchester County DSS. And she has close to 40 years of child and family services experience, working with our most vulnerable families throughout Westchester County. And also went to high school here in Mount Vernon. So she is a local, yes, great. And also my colleague, Dawn Lee Gregney, who works also with the county and is a team member in the Office of Policy Planning and Program Development. So with that, I'm going to pass the baton to Glenda Bryan, who will talk to us about an exciting initiative that we would like to discuss with you, really to get your buy-in on this initiative, which is really about better supporting our children, youth, and families in schools. So with that, I'll introduce Ms. Glenda Bryan. Thank you, Glenda.
Thank you. I talk loud, so. This is okay? Yes, I'm good. Went to Mount Vernon High School, was a Mount Vernon resident. So I look forward to come back into the Mount Vernon School District to offer this partnership with Mount Vernon that I'm going to talk a little bit about. Mount Vernon gave me my foundation, gave me my schooling, where I then went to college, then went to college, and then ended up with the Westchester Department of Social Services for 40 years. So it's good to come back into Mount Vernon, into the school system that shaped me. Let me talk a little bit about child welfare. At Westchester County, there is a law, it was called the Family First Prevention Service Act of 2018. It's a federal law, and it was nationwide. It applied to all departments of social services nationwide to say, really, look at how you are servicing families. Go back into the communities to make sure that children are thriving in their communities, in their homes, in their school system. Work with your communities to build and strengthen families' ability to keep their children in their community. That law really said, look at your foster care, and it really was, it is a law that's trying to put foster care out of business. Research has shown that when you separate a child from their parent, it causes a trauma. That's what we knew in Child Protective Services for many years. So we appreciated this law because we knew as soon as we come into a family's life, we are intrusive, and we can cause disruption, and we can cause trauma. So it was good that on the heels of this law, this law, it said, create some community pathways. Go back into your communities, interface with them, look at how you can help families without Child Protective Services becoming a part of their lives. And so we looked at that, we looked at our data. I will tell you that in, right now, our data, we're working very hard to keep children out of foster care. And we've done that, and the data shows that last year, when we had about 500-plus children in foster care, we now have it down to about 300. And so what we said, we're working with the state, we piggyback on the state, the state now has a way that when someone calls the registry, because they feel they're calling the registry, and they're making a report, because they're helping. I think many people that call the registry, call in to say, I have this concern about the family, I really think that they feel like this is the way to get the family some help. On the other side of that, those reports come to the Department of Social Services, to our Child Protective Unit, and it's very hard to work with a family when you're coming in and you're saying to them, we have to investigate, we have to ask you questions about your parenting. Sometimes that's necessary, but we wanted to do it in a more preventive way. We wanted to come into the school systems, one of the things is, we wanted to come into the communities, we wanted to come where the families are, where are their children? And by doing that, it was more preventive to come to say, before you get to the cliff, before you fall off the cliff, before somebody calls CPS, let us come into your family, let us come into your home to provide supportive services, to find out what is operating that challenges you in taking care of your children. We looked at our data, we said that, we found that Mount Vernon had some good bones, that we had worked with a lot of providers in Mount Vernon, and one of them is the Doyle Center, Community Neighborhood Center. So we said, let's come into the Mount Vernon school system to see if we can have a school liaison position. That's somebody, it's a small pilot program, because as you know, you can't eat the whole pie, you have to take a little slice. So we wanted to come in, and we asking you to allow us to come in to do a pilot program where we have someone, it would be a school liaison. That person would not be, they would be involved with the department, but actually, we're asking, we're trying to recruit somebody from the Mount Vernon community to fill that position. So we're going to do that. We want them to know, to have some information about the community that they're coming in to serve, and we're looking for that school liaison position to outreach, to work with you. The children that are having behavioral problems in the classroom, the ones that you are trying to educate, the ones that have behaviors that make it very difficult, we're hoping that we can interface with you, that that school liaison person could be someone that could go to the parent, bring them into the school system, have conversations with you about those behavioral issues, create a plan that would allow that child to really be educated, to thrive. So we're looking to go out to the parent, bring them in, have a conversation, try to look at what is challenging them, what services, do service delivery, link them to things that's in the community, link them to growth-promoting activities, whether it's in the school system, whether it's in the community. And at some point, to do all that and lead that family that they're more strengthened, they're more connected, they're more knowledgeable, they have the support of the community, their children are coming into the school system, they then can concentrate, because those issues that causes a child not to concentrate when they come to school, that causes them not to be focused, we're going to be working with the parent in the home community to identify those things, put the necessary services. I think most families that we work with, we know that, even though they distrust us once we get in there, we do find that they do love their kids, okay? They are challenged, they come with their own problems, they come with their own traumas, and that we not only are asking them to strengthen their ability to take care of their children, but to look at some of their challenges, their life struggles that keep them. I think the benefit for the school system is that you have kids that's coming more prepared to be educated, you have parents that's willing to come into the school system, because whether it's without us or with us, we're going to be at the table with them, we're going to be at the table with you. You're going to identify those children that you see that really need that additional support. I think one of the benefits is we go into the community, we go into families' homes, we have those tough conversations, we're kind of sturdy with those parents that like push you away, we really interface with them. We're hoping that our partnership with the community will strengthen families, will strengthen children, they're looking at their well-being, especially strengthen their ability to be educated, so they can really do the job that they're supposed to do, to grow, to be productive, to reach their dreams and aspirations. So I don't know if there's any questions for me?
Is this an initiative you want to start?
So who's going to be the appoint person in the district?
Dr. Gabitak. All right, Gabby.
I have a question. So you also mentioned that you would like to hire a liaison from a person to work with you, someone from the community?
We're looking, we have a resume, and we're going to send it out, we're looking for, we would like, our resume does say if they have, they live in Mount Vernon, they go through Mount Vernon school system, they are familiar with the Mount Vernon school community, we would like that, yes.
So you would be doing the hiring, not the school district, correct?
But we would ask that, if you have anyone in mind, yes, we would accept that, it's an open invitation for anyone to apply. We don't have a specific person in mind.
Thank you.
How will you, how do you handle the confidentiality of these cases that will be presented? You're saying you're going to liaison with the school district, how do you handle?
Well, if that, oh, I'm sorry, okay. The confidentiality? Well, the confidentiality is what we do now, we ask parents, when we outreach to parents, we ask them to sign a release. We respect parents' confidentiality, we explain to them why we would be getting in contact, what would be the benefit, it's a voluntary basis. I think we, our experience at the department is that we have, that school liaison person would have contact with the family, but no conversations would happen until they sign a release. We would work with you, because if you're going to be the referral source, we can work with you to get, to contact the parent, to explain the program, have them sign the necessary releases. I think for, when we look at this program, and that's why we're not looking at one of our caseworkers from the department to take this position, we understand that as soon as we say we're Child Protective Services or something, people tend to shut down, they don't, they distrust us. But they can also benefit from the services that we have, because we are strong on service delivery, we have certain evidence-based programs that is attached to the department through our funding, we are aware of the different programs, we interface with those service providers, those professionals. So I think when families hear that school liaison person is part of the community, is there for the department, but not really an employee of the department, families tend to open, because like I said, they really want to help their children. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to talk.
So, good evening again. I would like to take this opportunity, I didn't get a chance last meeting, to thank my fellow trustees for voting me in as the president of the board. It's just on paper, but we're all going to work together, as we have been for the last year, and we will all, you know, get the job done. We have good working relationship, and I'd like to continue that relationship that we have. And to trustee Saunders, and I know trustee White is not here yet, she's on her way, but trustee Saunders, I personally like to thank you for all of the hard work that you have done over the years. I know we all came in as new trustees last year, and you and trustee White really took us under your wings, and you molded us, you gave us guidance, and we couldn't have done it without you guys. And I just want to show appreciation for all your hard work. And I know I have big shoes to fill, and I am going to do the best of my ability. So thank you so much, and thank you again, everyone, thank you.
We're going to go into our resolutions. Can I have a motion for 3.1, approval to establish a title, Print Shop Production and Questions, concerns, discussions?
I just have one question, which is, I obviously understand the resolution, but is this the same position that was posted a while back for vacancy?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify the same thing, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 3.2, Human Resources 86A, certified?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 3.3, Human Resources Resolution 86B, classified?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
I would like to say congratulations to our new principals, that would be Andrea Thomas. She will be at Denzel Washington School for the Arts. Also at Denzel Washington, we'll have Yvonne Wright, she will be the assistant principal at Denzel Washington School for the Arts. We have Mr. Troy Newby. He will be the principal of Rebecca Turner Elementary School. And lastly, we have Angelique Brown, she'll be the assistant principal of STEAM.
Have a motion for 4.1, Authorization to Hire Staff for a Literacy Planning Committee, June the 2023-2024 school year.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 4.2, Authorization to Hire Staff for the No Place for Hate Summer District Leadership Team.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 4.3, Authorization to Update Staff at the Mount Vernon Aquatic Facility during the summer 2023.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 4.4, Authorization to Pay Stipend to Mount Vernon STEAM Academy Teachers to Attend Summer Training for Project Lead the Way Courses.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 4.5, Approval of Field Trips for the 2023-2024 School Year.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 4.6, Authorization to Hire Staff for the District Multi-Tierred System of Supports Team, June the summer, for the Mount Vernon City School District.
Motion.
I need... Questions, concerns, discussions?
So I have a question. I remember probably about, about a month ago, we approved these same individual for another summer program. Is this separate, or is it the same?
Yes, it's separate. So this is hourly, so it's not during the day, we meet and they do some of the work on their off time, and we come back and plan. So it's planning, they can plan after hours. Or if they're off that day, just say, for example, the summer program is Monday through Thursday, they can work that Friday. Usually the work is done after four, we may have a meeting for 20, 30 minutes, give everybody a task, they go back and plan, and we come back and meet.
If there won't be no conflict?
No conflict. No. That is correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 5.1, Authorization to Enter Into An Agreement with Custom Computer Specialists, Inc., for Data and Network Services from July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024. I need a motion?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Can someone explain this? Custom Computers Specialists?
Okay, so for the past 12 years, custom computers have been working with our district, providing the necessary network for us, all IT services, recently, the camera services, and everything that keeps a district up and running electronically. So we are, initially, they usually go through Lyric, but because of regulations, Lyric can no longer carry them, so the district will now have to pick that up.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 5.2, Authorization to Appoint a Data Protection Officer. Questions, concerns, discussions?
So, Dr. Jones, you want to tell us about this?
Okay, it's a, it's a state requirement to have a named person who will be uploading and keeping our, making sure our data is getting to the state in time, and making sure the right data is getting there as well.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 5.3, Authorization to Approve Additional SEP Leadership Team Staff. Need a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.1, Approve a Corporative Purchasing Contract? Second? Oh, okay. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.2, Award an Extension of RFP Number 2018-1905 for the 2023-2024 fiscal year to the recycling program, consult service, We Future Cycle. I need a motion?
Motion. Second.
Okay.
So I have a question.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Yes, I have a question, I know, Mr. Silver, if you could just explain what is this program is going to do for the upcoming school year? I know, is it going to be additional schools, or just the nine schools that the contract is for now?
So there are eight schools in the contract, per the email that I sent the other day, they are Lincoln, Graham, Grimes, Leadership, Hamilton, Pennington, Honor, and Williams. Each school, what you're being asked to approve is for the continuation of the existing program, 28,663, something like that. And each year, there's a startup cost of $875 at each of those eight schools, that's a one-time startup cost. And you do not pay for September, the $300 per month that's in this is only for the months of October through June. So the real extra cost for the month of September is difference between 875 and 300. And that, so this is just for the continuation of the program. I did send you, and I sent several people, as I was asked to do, a description of the program, which was done by Anna Giordano from We Future Cycle. So this is just for the continuation of the program. And so we have talked about this over the weekend, you and I, that to have other schools start, there's a startup cost of between 2,800 and 3,500 for each new school. Some people seem to think we were talking about putting all the other schools on in one year. I don't think that was ever contemplated. I think what was contemplated was to add one, or two, or three more schools in the current year, and then phase them in in the next few years. But I think it would be a big lift to add eight more schools in the one year. So this is just for the continuation of the existing program, and then it would be about $5,000, or something like that, for each school that was added on for the additional year. So we might, so the board would need to have a separate action if they wanted to do additional schools, but this is just to get them going, regoing for this year. There's new principals, there's new assistant principals, there's a new population, and so there's a startup of getting the school going again with the existing program.
So you mentioned they're going to be, if we add the additional eight school, the startup fee is 2,800 as opposed to 875? Is that what you're saying?
Because the 875 is for an existing school to get them started again in the current year, to reboot. The 2,800 for an elementary school, 3,500 for... I'm sorry?
They're going to be starting from scratch?
Starting from scratch, it would be 2,800 for an elementary school, 3,500 for a high school, and then $300 a month for nine months after that. So again, this is just for what we have now. I don't know of any exact plan to do anymore right now, nothing's been proposed.
Do they still have all their materials and all the tender?
They do. During COVID, a lot of that stuff disappeared during the time we were closed, but that's all been up again this past year. But that's all been up again this past year. So, let me read it again. It is Lincoln, Graham, Grimes, Leadership, Hamilton, Pennington, Honor, and Williams. So, I don't know what would be the next school that we would start, but that decision, I don't know who made that decision to have those eight particular schools as the first eight schools.
No, I was saying that program started years ago, like three, four years ago. It just stopped during the pandemic. And it restarted last year. So, what he's asking is just the continuation of the program. We probably could just phase in a school or two until the whole district is fully engaged in the recycling program.
That would be a different time and a different request.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.3. Authorization to extend bid number 22-2303, Landscape into Picture Perfect Land Services, Inc., for the 23-24 fiscal year. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions?
Questions?
Okay. I was kind of disappointed when I was, two or three days ago, walking around the district, seeing the condition of our grounds. Are they able to take care of the whole district is my question?
They do not... They take care of weeding, mulching, flower beds, and sprinkler systems in the buildings... Well, I'll read the names of the buildings, even though you have seen it, but...
Why is that? I'm just trying to understand how the labor is...
And our people take care of everything else in all the other schools.
They've been working at the different schools because some of the property does not look like they've ever been cut.
So, the cutting of the lawn has nothing to do with this company?
I know.
Right.
I'm talking about our people.
So, our grounds, so this is not about our grounds, crew?
Well, my concern is the weeding. There are plenty of weeds out there. I mean, I did see some movement in the last two days before this contract came up. I did see some improvement. My concern is at, I saw it at Denzel, Washington. I saw some weeding done at Grimes.
So...
They have bushes in the front, so they're supposed to water and take care of it.
So, those...
I see that it has been cut, right? But I'm saying it's not, I mean, and Graham, I've seen some, parts of Graham have been taken care of. So, I'm wondering, are they able to service the buildings that they're...
They do the district office, front and back, the flower beds, but nobody has been doing it because there's been no contract. That's why we're trying to get this done tonight. That expired June 30. They were doing it in the spring. So, this takes place between April and October. They get the sprinklers going, and then in October, they close down the sprinklers. But during all the rest of that time, they do all the weeding, mulching in the schools that you've received in the email.
So, you mentioned that the contract expired in June. Why did we wait it until the contract expired to have a new contract as opposed to just keep it going?
I don't recall exactly what happened, but for some reason, in April, we extended the contract just through June. I think it was on a cycle that we didn't like.
Okay.
Rather than having it be on this cycle. So, this, they will not be charging, of course, for the beginning of July, but they will be working diligently, and I think you will see a major change right away. This company is a Mount Vernon company, and you know we are hard pressed to have our own doing our work here.
I like the idea that it's a local business, but I want to make sure that they're going to give us the services that we need. And so, that's why my question was, can they handle the buildings that they are presently contracted to take care of?
They're well-equipped to do this.
We're going to see the difference. But the growing season is in the summer. Most of the weeds and stuff come up, you know, spring to summer.
They'll be there tomorrow.
So, they'll, okay. So, they'll just, okay, I'll leave it at that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay. Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.4. Approve a contract with ADP Group, Inc., for the annexed building asbestos abatement and demolition at the Grimes School.
Motion.
Can I... Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.5. Authorization of the extension of transportation contracts with All County Bus Company, LLC, and First Student, Inc.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.6. Approve general fund transfers 2022-2023 dated July 25, 2023.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.7. Authorization to contract with Aquitech Recreation, Inc., for cleaning, repair, and maintenance of the Mount Vernon High School pool.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions?
I have a question. I don't understand. It says approximately $8,000 annually, but then it says total cost is approximately 34.
So, we do not know exactly what repairs? So, this is more of an allowance? So, this is not an exact figure?
Yeah, but it says excluding unforeseen repairs.
Right. But there could be repairs that we know we're going to do, and they could come in less or more for regular scheduled repairs if something happens that we don't know on the spot. I think this would be a good time to discuss what you asked me about over the weekend, President Kirwin, that we have substantial revenue from the pools. We had some, what I think was $100,000 in revenue from the pool for last year. Now, this goes into our general fund as revenue. It doesn't match the expense of the pool, but the revenue that we get from the several sources that we have more than exceeds the, all the cost of the pool. This is just the general, this will be emptying the pool, fixing the tile inside the pool. You all may remember 10 years, this pool was closed for 10 years before 2014-15, and it cost a lot of money to get going. We want to take good care of it. So, this includes fixing the tile on the deck, fixing the runways. And then, there's also the maintenance of the equipment, which costs several million dollars. That's separate, but still within the cost of what we earn in revenue from it.
Okay, thanks. I know I did ask about the revenue and the expenses. Now, I want to know, the 26,000 is coming out of the general budget as opposed to, I guess, my question over the weekend, as we were going back and forth to clarify this. I wanted to know if the revenue generated by the pool is going to be used for maintaining the pool? Because I think that should, the revenue should just offset the maintenance of the pool as opposed to taking it out of the general fund.
So, the nature of a budget and our revenue requirements are that any money that we earn goes into as additional, as revenue in the general fund. We have a line in the general fund for pool revenues, and we have under the general fund also expenses for pool maintenance. So, those numbers don't necessarily match. One doesn't talk to another. They are separate, just like we would not be designating state aid to pay for textbooks. One thing is not necessarily match another. So, it's revenue in, expense out. And if we do well and we have greater revenue than expense, that becomes part of fund balance.
Okay, so I also mentioned, you also mentioned that the revenue is then put into account at the high school for school activities.
Right. So, one small part of the revenue has always gone into a student activities count, which is run by the student activities treasurer at the high school, just like every school has its activities treasurer. They have their own account within the one account to chase, that is the student activities account for Mount Vernon High School. Those monies are used, this is the revenue we collect, $5 a person when they come in on the weekends or whenever they're paying for admission. This is not a group using the pool for practice. This is our residents using the pool. That money goes into a separate fund through the student activities accounts to be used for incidental expenses for the kids for the pool, like kickboards or something to be used by our kids rather than going through purchase orders. There are several clubs like that. So, it's really like a club where the clubs use certain revenues to pay for things for their own kids. So, this is only our kids get the benefit of this.
Oh, so only the kids...
Only our kids.
Throughout the district, not just for the high school kids, just throughout the district?
All our kids. Any kid that's in the swimming pool, that's our kid has the benefit of this program.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Let me ask a question. Is there still a pool at Denzel?
There is a pool underneath the cafeteria.
Right, it's still there.
That was, it's still there. I've been down there, but it hasn't been a pool for 50, 70, 80 years, something like that. It's still there.
Okay.
That's one of the urban myths.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.8. Approve the settlement tax proceedings for Kojak Construction, LLC. Second?
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions?
I have a question. I see that the next, at least four or five, but I just want to understand better what the settlement tax proceedings are for each of these.
Sure. These are all the same thing, one way or another, Trustee Middleton. They are negotiated settlements or court-ordered judgments, which are approved by Ingraham and Smith, our attorneys. And then, we also participate, Ingraham and Smith also participates in the settlement itself. The board, several years ago, authorized Ingraham and Smith to be involved in cases that are of importance or high-dollar volume potential for us to pay back. Any settlement costs us 2/3 of the settlement, and the city costs the city 1/3 of the settlement, just like taxes, 2/3 us, 1/3 the city. So, this is all settlements. It could be, none of these are private properties. These are all co-ops or condominiums or businesses that are getting this refund. And some of them go back many years for when the settlement, some of them could be five, six years going back, and then the settlement is finally, or the court-ordered settlement is finally happens. So, we get this information from our attorneys, and we process it and we pay it back. Again, I was working with President Kirwin over the weekend on the expense of this from last year. I don't know if everybody received this, but we spent over $3.1 million last year in these settlements. The totality of this today is about a million, but we have a lot more that we haven't processed. Sometimes, it's a slow process getting it through the business office to get these things paid after there's a settlement that Ingraham and Smith tells us about.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.9. Approve the settlement tax proceedings for Jalera Realty Corp.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.10. Approve the settlement tax proceeding for Bronxville Field Club. Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.11. Approve the settlement tax proceedings for 22 West First Street, LLC.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.12. Approve the settlement tax proceedings for 105 Monroe Apartments, LLC.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.13. Authorization to award RFP number 2023-24-06, Business Operations and Finance Consult Services, to Bruce H. Singer.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 7.1. Authorize a contract extension with MJB Communications.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. A motion for 7.2. Approval of a revised employee agreement for the title change with Dr. Beverly Jones.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 7.3. Approval of a revised employee agreement for title change with Dr. Jamal Dorgit.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 7.4. Authorization to execute an agreement and general release between the Board of Education and employee number 1463.
Motion.
Who's second? Is that you? Oh, okay. Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 7.5. Approve a settlement agreement and general release, employee number 4553.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay. Can have a motion for 8.1. To approve the draft of the 2023-2024 district-wide safety plan for public comments.
Second.
Okay, and she's gonna, she's gonna read.
So, our new school year, district-wide safety, and according to New York State, it has several changes. I want to read the public report that opened it for public. There's some new changes to the district-wide safety plan. So, on June 23, 2023, New York State passed a law called Alyssa's Law. This law is amended to require schools to consider installation of a silent panic alarm in any school when rewiring, amending school safety plan. A panic alarm is a silent security signal generated by a manual activation of a device attendant to signal a life-threatening or emergency situation requiring response from local law enforcement. This new law requires that school districts start planning for this. So, as a district-wide committee, we start talking about how we would fund this, how would we implement it, and what system we are going to use. Also new to the school district-wide safety plan is the new school safety and educational climate summary data, which replaces the old VADA and the old DAS system. Another requirement is the emergency response protocol spelled out for school district. So, this part explains how the superintendent in an emergency, who they will call, and the order it would be called. So, you will notice on this plan, on our school are listed alphabetically, the name of the principal and their number. Also new to this part of the plan is what the district will do in case of a bomb threat, hostage-taking, an intrusion in a building, kidnapping, or active shooter. So, the plan actually... So the plan actually detail what are the protocol, what will happen, who is the person who will respond in case of any of those emergencies. Also added, which will take place on August 15, we are now required to name who is the district chief emergency officer. So that will happen on August 15 after the 30-day period of this plan being reviewed by the public. The public will be able to make comment. Another thing that is now required by New York State is that all district other than a pandemic plan, added to the pandemic plan is a remote instruction plan. Hours detail what the district will do for elementary school students, how will we distribute computer, how will we distribute Wi-Fi, how will we ensure that all educational processes take over? The way we laid it out is by grade level, explaining that all our student has one-to-one devices. Our pre-K students have, all have touchscreen devices such as an iPad and the procedures for getting them and whom to contact if they need additional device. So our original district plan was about 15 pages. With the new requirement, it is now 30 pages. Upon approval, this will be open for 30 days of public comment. The comments will be reviewed. The district-wide team will meet again to amend it before it is finally voted on. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, the financial history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, and to receive legal advice on a pending matter? Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?